Good evening again. This is Harry Frank at the Vermont School Board Association. I'd like to welcome new board members, mentors of new board members, and others that may be on the line with us tonight. This webinar is intended to serve as an overview of school board work and as a reference to turn to going forward. A brief look at what we'll cover tonight. I want to give you a sense of how education governance is organized in Vermont, both at the state and the local level. Much of the focus then, of course, is on what is the role of the school board in that governance structure? And highlight particularly the importance of a board being effective and ethical in its service. I then want to step back a bit from the internal workings of boards to look broadly at the evolution of our, the way we organize public education in Vermont, and bring that up to date by talking briefly about Act 46. I will pause after the bulk of the presentation to make sure we address any questions that you have. And then the final slides include a general listing of resources and supports that are available through the School Boards Association, as well as some trainings that are coming up, so important dates and details. There are other sessions available for new and experienced board members on an ongoing basis. Let's look at the structure of education governance on a state level. Much like the balance of powers in different arms of government, the way responsibilities fall out around education governance in our state are broken out in this way. At the top of the screen, you see the legislature, whose responsibility it is to pass or establish laws which govern both education and municipal government. So they're responsible for taking that statewide point of view. The courts, of course, serve to interpret those laws in the context of the state constitution. And the governor and his or her designees on the state board are responsible for executing those laws. The agency of education is the other central player in the state system, and essentially the agency of education carries out the work that's established through these arms of government. Let's look at the structure of education governance in our state on a regional and local level. This slide looks at a supervisory union structure, which is a structure which has evolved by virtue of a number of towns coming together to serve their students on a regional basis. Really, the responsibilities we'll talk about that local and district boards have to their students are mirrored at the supervisory union level. So this slide illustrates the accountability and, in a sense, the flow of information and expectations. So you see at the top of the slide, the supervisory union board, which is made up of representatives from all the district boards, oversees the work of the organization, and fundamentally supervises the superintendent. We often use the term mutual accountability to describe the relationship between the supervisory union board and the superintendent. And by mutual accountability, what we mean is the board establishes expectations, what it is that they want for students in their system to know and be able to do ultimately. The superintendent, in response, is obligated to move the system toward those outcomes, ensure our students receive those kinds of experience and develop those skills, acquire that knowledge, and provide evidence that the system is performing well. So it's the board establishing expectations and the superintendent providing evidence of that work being accomplished. This next slide is a look at districts that are governed by a single board. So maybe I can just go back for a moment. I didn't highlight the fact that the supervisory union board in a supervisory union oversees the superintendent. The superintendent also works directly with each of the district boards. In fact, in statute, the language reads something like, "The superintendent shall serve as the chief executive officer for the supervisory union board and all district boards." So by contrast, a supervisory district or a school district, it's sometimes referred to, has a single board which oversees the superintendent, and through that relationship provides guidance and oversight of the schools.
The contrast between the supervisory union and the supervisory district governance structures is striking. In the supervisory union structure, there are multiple lines of authority and accountability. In the supervisory district, there is one. The work of mutual accountability, that's the board establishing expectations and the superintendent providing evidence of progress in achieving those expectations. That work is more aligned in a supervisory district.
I'd like to step back and talk generally about the role of the school board. I've mentioned some of these responsibilities in the first few slides. But we really highlight the terms trustees and oversight. So the board acts as trustees on behalf of the community to provide oversight, strong oversight, of public education. So the system generally ensuring three critical elements. And I often refer to this as sort of the elevator speech. You know, what's the most concise way to summarize what a school board's responsibility is? It needs to ensure that all students receive a high-quality education. It needs to ensure that the public gets a good return on its investment. We often talk about that as taxpayers, but I think it's a broader concept of return on investment. Certainly, financial investment, but we invest much more than just dollars in our schools. And finally, that the system operates effectively and ethically. It's really critical to serve as trustees, to act as trustees, you have to be, the board has to build a trusting relationship. That's why we use that term. And so, operating ethically means upholding the law, respecting people in that process, and as a result, building a relationship that's defined as trusting. Being effective is that task of providing effective oversight, being clear about expectations, outcomes, really the broad vision, and ensuring that the system makes progress toward that. What does that look like in more specific terms? So I want to work my way around a wheel that we use to illustrate the seven most critical areas of responsibility for a board. So we've talked generally about the role. Now I want to break out some specific responsibilities. First and foremost, as I mentioned, the board serves as trustees. So building trust is a function of many things, including engagement, being engaged with the community in conversations about what's important to people in the community, how the school is performing, and how, in fact, together, the community and the school can promote the education of our children. That goes hand in hand with the idea of creating a vision, building together a picture of what it is that you want your students to have when they leave your system. I often use that term or that phrase, "What do you want students to know and be able to do?" So that's central to the work of the board, coming to a vision. And it's certainly a dialogue with the community, as well as the educational professionals in your system. You obviously, as a board, rely enormously on the educators in your system to bring research, best practice, and data, reflections on work in your own context. That ultimately gets translated to expectations that the superintendent is obligated to fulfill. So we talked about that in an earlier slide around with respect to the term mutual accountability. It's critical for boards to understand that that's their one employee. That's the language, again, from statute. And so, the board serves as the supervisor of that superintendent. It underscores how important it is to be clear about your expectations and to ask for evidence, for good data on performance. It's often a challenging relationship for board members, particularly new board members, to navigate, because most board members come to their work as not professional educators. And the superintendent, of course, is often the most experienced and often an enormously skilled educator. So to assume that we citizens can supervise somebody in an arena we don't have expertise is a delicate balance to find. So that's why we talk so much about a broad conversation that establishes a big picture about what it is we want to accomplish, and that that kind of expectation is where the board needs to focus, oversight of those broad systems' outcomes. Policy, which is really the documented legacy of a school board's evolution over time, is the information that really guides the work of everyone in the system. The board, as well as the professional educators, and to a certain extent, how the board and the community will engage with each other. So it's critical to be familiar with policy, which is not to suggest that you need to know the letter of, you know, all the detail in every policy, but to understand how policy functions to establish the guidelines and boundaries for the operations of this organization. Again, one of the statutory obligations of a board is to create a budget, to establish a budget, to put before the voters for consideration. I want to underscore the language we use here, create a budget to support the vision. If we're going to set out to accomplish high-quality education for every student, then we need to use the resources we have to accomplish that. And so it's critical to think about budgeting as an illustration of what's important, what the community values, and what the school system aspires to accomplish for its students. And of course, it's critical to take a look at what's happening, to monitor progress toward the vision. If you declare you want to get somewhere and you set out to get there, your obligation to your students, to your taxpayers, to your staff for that matter, is to hold them accountable to making progress. That's effective board work. The final responsibility plugged into the middle here is to draw your attention to how important it is to attend to negotiating contracts that are aligned with this cycle of visioning and community expectations and student needs. So boards need to think of these things in an integrated fashion, and this provides, I hope, a good way to visualize the work. It's not to say that the work flows in this sequence in an inflexible manner, but it's a way to talk about the relationship among each element and to visualize it in a concise way. I want to come back to the arena I touched on around operating effectively and ethically. There are some critical obligations that boards need to step up to. First and foremost, you need to uphold open meeting law. It's very clear in its description of what a board is obligated to do in terms of warning meetings, conducting meetings, reporting on meetings. And that's intended to provide transparency and access for people in the community. One of the ways that boards enable, are able to operate effectively and ethically is to look at a code of ethics. The VSBA has a model code of ethics that we have available on our website. And it's designed to do two things. One, to underscore elements of state statute that are central to the board's responsibilities. So I mentioned open meeting law, and you see here conflict of interest. These are two items that are identified in statute and that we reflect in our code of ethics. Again, to build trust between the school board and the community, to assure that taxpayers are getting a good return on their investment, it's critical that board members operate as transparently as possible. And we think one of the best mechanisms for doing that is to look at a code of ethics, a set of commitments, a work plan. I mean, boards have a number of different ways of talking about this, but it's the idea we are going to establish a set of standards for how we do our work and commit to those. Stepping back even further, I want to echo the notion of providing oversight. It's often the case that board members come to their work with ideas and opinions, passions, experiences that they want to relate and move the board forward with. It's critical that you are able to draw the line between assuring that the school is well-run, but not crossing the line into wanting to run the school. And I say that, you know, based on personal reflection, having been a board member, as well as having been a building administrator, and knowing how important it is for each of us to play our role effectively so as to enable the system to be successful. And another way of reiterating this, and we'll take some time to talk about this further, is to understand that the source of a board's power is in the body, in the majority of the board. Individual board members do not have any legal powers outside the context of the board. I had an experienced board member say to me in the context of a training, "I don't think of myself as a board member except when I am at a board meeting." And I think that's a good mechanism or strategy to use to remember what those lines are. So broad parameters around operating effectively and ethically to reinforce and enable the board to fulfill its role around serving as trustees and providing good oversight. All this information I've referenced is available in the text that we published called "The Essential Work of School Boards," and we'll include a reference to that at the close of this webinar. So let's take a look at a common experience for board members that illustrates many of the essential elements of effective and ethical board work. Take a moment to read this brief case study and consider the questions here. And I'm going to pause for a minute and ask you to begin to put your thoughts in writing and share those with us through, again, the question box that's on your control panel. So by way of giving time to process, let me read this briefly and read the questions, and then again, pause for a minute to give you a chance to respond. So imagine you've been on the board for the past three months. You're in the grocery store, and a person in town with whom you are acquainted comes up to you and begins to complain about her child's teacher. She feels that the teacher is not responsive to her child's needs, but also that she is not attentive to a high-needs child in the classroom. She wants the school board to do something about it. So I want to know, what do you do in that moment? You're right there in the middle of the grocery store. How do you react? Even what's going on in your mind, as well as what do you say? And moving forward, how do you leave it with her? And finally, what do you do next? So again, I'm going to pause for a moment. I hope people will share some of their initial thoughts as unsure. Let me just share what people are saying in response, and please continue to chime in if you'd like. And then what I'll do is talk us through some guidelines for responding. So one of the comments was, "I'd encourage her to take her concerns to the teacher and/or the principal of the school." That's right on. "I acknowledge the parent's concern and ask if she has talked to the child's teacher or principal." So in fact, those are exactly the kinds of responses that I think are appropriate. Let me read one more as well. "As a new board member, I would feel unsure of the best answer to give and would probably let her know that, 'I'm sorry to hear about her experience,' but would invite her to come to the next board meeting and let her know that I would speak to the board as well." Great. Okay, so let me sort of pull out what I think are good guidelines from many of the comments you've just made. Look, great, we got one more that just came in, so I want to read this as well. "Listen politely. Encourage the person to share with the teacher and principal, if not addressed, the superintendent. May send email to the superintendent letting them know this was happening." Okay, got it, got it, great. So I think they're really valuable elements of all the comments that have come in. As I do with many of the trainings that are case study-based, and at the end of tonight's session, there'll be a slide that has the upcoming trainings listed. The typical pattern I use is to pose a case study with questions such as this, facilitate conversation to a certain extent, and then begin to draw out what are the common themes and useful guidelines going forward. So you're going to see these are building right off comments you've made. So the idea of listening is first and foremost. And that's because, you know, this is a person that's concerned, upset about something. I think, you know, just on the level of person-to-person relations, there's a responsibility to hear them. And in so doing, I think you're communicating that you care, that you want things to work. So that's number one. Number two, there is a policy in place, sometimes referred to as a complaint policy or a chain of command. This is one of the policies that I think is really important to be familiar with. And in essence, I think the comments have mentioned sort of the critical steps in a complaint policy or a chain of command policy. So you hear someone out, probably to a limited basis. I mean, keep in mind, you're in a grocery store. It's quite likely there are other people walking by who are going to catch snippets of your conversation. Let me hearken back to how important it is to be trustworthy as a board, and in this case, as an individual board member. And one of the best ways you can do that is to, you know, thoughtfully and politely direct the person who's concerned to the right channels. I mean, essentially what you've described, to the source of the problem, the teacher, the principal, whomever it might be. I mean, that's, you know, the basis of respectful problem-solving. It's also an effective way to reinforce the effectiveness of your system. I mean, your chain of command policy basically says, direct the person to take their concern to the source of the problem. And if it's not resolved, then they can move to the next level, that chain of command. And I know that was mentioned in one person's comment. So if it's not resolved there, the supervisor of the teaching staff is the building principal, and that would be the next place to take a concern. And as difficult as it is, I think what we're trying to make sure here is that the concern is addressed, which is sometimes different than the person getting the resolution that they want. And ultimately, the board's responsibility is to make sure that you have a system that works, not that people get what they want or are happy with the result. But where the board fits into this is critical, and you'll see it happens at the end of the process. And so if there were any guidance I would give, or direction I would give back to some, one of the comments, it would be not to take the concern immediately to the board, which is not to say, and this is actually the next bullet on this slide, that it's not important to inform, in this case, our recommendation, and many policies say, the board chair and the administrator, and that can be, that is typically the superintendent, but can often be the principal. That flow of communication is an important conversation to have, so everybody understands how your system works, who should be informed about what, and so that you're all operating in the same way. Because if one board member is taking concerns directly to the board, and another board member is taking concerns directly to the superintendent, it will begin to send inconsistent messages and eat away at that trustworthiness that's so important for the board to build and maintain. One of the other reasons why you're informing the board chair and administrator is so that they can identify patterns. It might be the case that there's an issue that comes up multiple times, and if, you know, each of five board members gets approached by one concerned parent, and no one has the big picture, then it's possible to miss a problem that needs to be addressed. And in fact, it may rise to the level of the board concern. But getting there is a process, teacher to principal to superintendent. And the language of our model policy directs the person with a concern to put their concern in writing if it can't be resolved at the teacher level. So that's the flow as it comes up through the chain of command. Many boards, many leadership teams, so boards and administrators together, also employ a strategy where they kind of cycle back to the person who was unhappy initially. So this idea of following up later, it's another way to convey that you hear their concern, that you care, that you want to make sure the system is effective, and so having a way to close the loop provides that kind of assurance. And finally, and I know I touched on this a little bit, the board sits at the end of that chain of command. Their role is to hear and appeal if it cannot be resolved through those other levels. And that's why it's so important that when you're standing there in the grocery store, your response is not, "Okay, you know, I can help you solve this problem. I'll talk to the teacher or the principal or the superintendent, or let's talk immediately with the board." That's not to say that a person with a concern might not choose to come directly to the board to voice their concern. They have every right to do so. One of the requirements of open meeting law is that the board include a time in each meeting agenda for the public to be heard, the public comment session period. So it's not as though that's not a channel open to them. What's critical is that you, as an individual board member faced with this scenario, understand that we have a structure to address concerns. My job is to direct the person with the complaint how to use that structure. And to sit at the end of that sequence should an issue not be resolved, so that we can keep tabs, provide oversight of the effectiveness of this system. So that's the flow, and the reason, again, why I think it's a good case study to take up right at the outset is, number one, because it's a very common experience. And number two, in the way that you deal with it, you can send an important message to that member of the community, and for that matter, the community at large, let alone the board, that we understand our role, and while we carry it out in as thoughtful and caring a way as we can, there are still boundaries that we each operate within, and we are doing our very best to work within those roles and responsibilities to reinforce the success of the whole system. So a little reflection broadly before I go into the historical context that we find ourselves in. So again, remember, you're here to assure that every student receives a high-quality education. Your job is not to run the school. Your job is to make sure that the school is well-run. You're certainly, I mean, we all bring our passions and our commitments, our ideas, our questions to the table. The challenge is to do that and keep the big picture in mind, the idea that as a system we are dedicated to these outcomes, to this vision for our students. And so as passionately as I feel about this reading program, or this field trip, or this style of teaching, or the need to repair this part of our building, I need to bring that passion and commitment and focus in a way that reinforces the overall work of this organization, the big picture. And finally, to underscore again how important it is to avoid conflicts of interest, and those are described as receiving anything of value for the work that you do on the board unless it's arrived at through a public bidding process or as a recognition for service. board unless it's arrived at through a public bidding process or as a recognition for service, which takes the form of both board stipends in some instances or awards. And I also include the perception of conflicts. You know, this is one of the more challenging elements or dimensions of board service, particularly in small communities, because we are so often connected to the people who may be contracted to do work, who may be employees of the school, or for that matter, that we have, you know, strong feelings about one way or another. Again, if I go back to the opening slide about the role of the board and refer to the term "to service trustees on behalf of the community," it really is the idea of how do I build trust? I need to assure people in this community that I am here for everyone's best interests, ultimately, the education of every one of our children, every one of our students, and that I'll do so in a way that is ethical, effective, efficient.
I want to set the context for board work today by connecting our circumstances, the challenges and the opportunities, to the exchange between the state and local communities that has created the system we have today. From the commitment to education declared a state responsibility in the Constitution and the work of local communities to deliver on that commitment, the state and local communities have balanced their obligations and aspirations. The state has focused its efforts on ensuring an equitable education experience for all of our children. Local communities have taken up the responsibility to deliver that educational experience in a way that reflects our values and best practices. Looking back and looking ahead, the state upholds its obligation to equity in our public school system through taxation and its obligation to quality through assessment. Local communities shape an education program that responds to the needs and interests of our students with the guidance of our education professionals.
And now Act 46. So the circumstances that led to the passage of Act 46 in 2015 were a response to real and persistent concerns regarding equity, quality, and cost in the state where we are educating 20,000 fewer students than we were two decades ago. So we've had a significant decline in the number of our students over the past 20 years. Ultimately, Act 46 calls on boards to lead critical conversations. It's conversations with your community about how to design these new systems that will address the challenges that they face, and at the same time, preserve what matters most in your communities. So I went back in time to provide that brief history lesson, because I think many of the themes that we see now echoed again in Act 46 are themes that we have been grappling with as a state, and over time have evolved, you know, have made progress in different ways evolving the system that we have today. What's critical though, is that the work begins and stays focused on what we want for our children. Conversations need to be informed by community values and educational practices that best serve our students. And these are really conversations that boards are at the center of. What are our community's value? What do they want for their students? What experiences, what knowledge, skills, aptitudes? What are the aspirations that we have for our students, and how do those translate into And I guess the flip side of the coin, what is, what's working? What are our successes and challenges? Boards being willing to ask those hard questions and being willing to address those. Those are the fundamental obligations of Act 46. In tackling those challenges to ultimately better meet the needs of students, there's another set of questions that we've been posing to communities and boards and study committees. What limitations prevent us from making our system better? How can we change, bend, or break those limits? And how, what the how we've always done it assumptions might be keeping us from finding ways to better create opportunities for our children. So it's really about asking questions which examine our assumptions and identify principles that'll guide us moving forward. The law has provided some very clear descriptors of what we need to accomplish. So in the end, the law says that "Honor before July 1, 2019. Educational opportunities in Vermont shall be provided through sustainable governance structures that provide pre-K to 12th educational opportunities at a reasonable cost." Again, those themes of opportunity, quality education, reasonable cost, those same principles that I mentioned in terms of the role of the board early on. More specifically, Act 46 talks about the following criteria for these sustainable governance structures. So they're expected to achieve equity, equity in the quality and variety of educational qualities, opportunities, again, across a pre-kindergarten to 12th grade education system, to lead students to meet or exceed the education quality standards, which are currently in, being piloted, the education quality reviews, I should say, are being piloted to measure progress toward those quality standards, and to maximize operational efficiencies through greater flexibility to manage, share, and transfer resources with the goal of increasing district-level student-to-staff ratios. The final one around transparency and accountability, I think echoes many of the expectations that are codified in open meeting law, as well as other criteria that are in development. So criteria around transparency and accountability and operational efficiencies are coming from the State Board of Education. So with that frame in mind, I want to call you back to your central responsibility as a board member, delivering a high-quality education to all your students, providing a good return on investment for all your taxpayers and citizens, and operating in an effective, efficient, and ethical manner. As you start your work, and this would be the other place I want to pause and ask for your comments or further questions, as you start your work as a board member, what is your most pressing question? We use the same strategy that we employed before. I think I'll pause a little bit longer and ask for any questions that are particularly pressing at this point. Keep in mind, the School Boards Association staff is here to serve school boards, to support you in your work going forward. There are many resources available, as well as people available for questions and conversations. So at the end of this set of slides, there's a good deal of information that I'll touch on very briefly about the association, including some training dates coming up. But if there are some pressing questions right now...
So the question is, are we violating open meeting law if school board members attend a training together? As long as board members from the same board do not take up work that is specific to their board, but are instead participating in a training to learn about good governance or other topics related to our schools, they are not in violation of open meeting law.
Okay, so not seeing any more questions right away, I want to encourage you again to contact us at any point going forward. I do want to pull up a couple more slides here for your reference, and I will just very briefly touch on these. These are the upcoming, basically, trainings, or what we often refer to as board development opportunities, running right through our annual conference in the fall. And again, I'm going to move quickly through these because you'll have these as part of the deck of slides that we send following tonight's webinar. These are the more specific dates, times, and places for the Essential Work of School Board session, which is particularly designed as an orientation for new school board members. That said, we encourage any and all school board members to attend, and ideally, school boards would attend together as a way of really having a common frame of reference. And then the remaining slides are really brief descriptors of who we are as an organization and how we do our work, which is broken out really between serving as a collective voice at the policy level and supports for boards to do their work. So with that in mind, I want to thank you for participating tonight, and ask you to please complete the evaluation when you exit the webinar. And I'll leave you with that and our contact information. Thank you again for joining us tonight.